Alright, and away we go. Well, welcome back everybody, or welcome to the elusive stream over here on the Grim Green YouTube known as Wild Card Wednesday. And it's just, that's just what it is. It just happens sometimes. It happens sometimes without warning on weird weeks. And this is a weird week, you guys. This is a weird week. There is so much going on. The first thing I guess I have to do is, let's welcome Jamie and Joe Rogan. I feel like they might be watching this live stream. I don't know. It could be, but welcome. Welcome Jamie and Joe Rogan. Here's what we're all about over here on the Grim Green YouTube. This is what we're all about. There's so much stuff going on. So I have a lot of stuff that I wanted to talk about today. I'm gonna get ranty about kids for a little bit. I'm gonna get ranty about Los Angeles for a little bit. We're gonna get ranty about kinda what's going on. Like what stuff? What stuff is going on all over the country? Trying to get a hold of someone that might be jumping on as a special guest just to have like a first, a first, okay, people are telling me that the camera is grainy. I have no control over that. My wifi is streaming fast as shit. If it's grainy, maybe give it a little bit of a refresh and see what's going on. See what's going on there. The first thing, very first thing, right out of the gate, alright everybody, stop texting. I looked down, 12 text messages. Alright, alright, there we go. Let's pump the brakes here, friends. Let's pump the brakes here, friends. So the first thing, the first thing I want to talk about, something I'm gonna be linking to right in the chat. This is, this is the first step forward, friends. You don't have to click that link right now, but you can click that link right now. Let's just go ahead and read what, what link I put in the description. Fig Ramsey just dropped this off to me. "The Vapor Technology Association files a lawsuit against the New York Department of Health, and Public Health, and Health Planning Council to stop ill-considered flavor ban." Yeah, there has been a lawsuit filed now in the state of New York on behalf of the VTA that we're gonna sue, well, we, I say we, but really the VTA. When I say we, I just mean, I just mean vapors, you know? Just vapors. I'm a vapor, you're a vapor, VTA's vapors. That's what I mean by we. I'm not, I'm not in with the VTA. I'm not a part of the VTA. I'm just a big supporter of Fig Ramsey and the VTA and everything that they're doing. And I know that Fig Ramsey's not like, that's okay. I'm getting off track. I'm getting off track. And one thing that happens with me constantly is I'll make just some offhand remark like that, and then I'll like, double back and try to re-explain every thought process I had going through it. Doesn't much matter. Let's read about this. Washington, September 25th, 2019. Vapor Technology Association, the industry's National Trade Association, Benevolent E Liquids, a New York manufacturer, and Perfection Vape Inc. Why can't I read today? What the crap is going on? I've been reading too much. That's just the problem. I've just been reading too much. All I've spent today, all I've done today is read. Relax. Cooking with Kirby? Alright. Let's just all, let's just all pump the brakes. How's everybody doing today? How's everybody doing today? Good, good. Alright, Cooking with Kirby, that's enough relaxing. Washington, September 25th, 2019. VTA, the industry's National Trade Association, Benevolent E Liquids, a New York manufacturer, and Perfection Vapes, a New York retailer filed a lawsuit seeking declaratory? Declaratory? Declaratory judgment? I've never, I've never heard the word declaratory, so that's, that's new to me. That's a new interesting word. I'll have to figure out what that word means at some point. "New York retailer filed a lawsuit seeking a declaratory judgment, a temporary restraining order, and a preliminary injunction and permit injunction in the Supreme Court of the New York State, in the Supreme Court of the State of New York for Albany County against the New York State Department of Health." Let me tell you something that is really difficult for me. Being, uh, being dyslexic and being an activist advocate for vaping is difficult because it's a lot of reading, and I find myself having to read things like two, three, four times in a row, but that's fine. We're gonna get through this. We're gonna get through this. So they filed this lawsuit with the New York Department, New York State Department of Health, and Public Health, and Health Planning Council, to nullify the ban in New York State of flavored vapor products and to prevent it from being enforced. Yeah. So that's happening. That's a thing that's happening over there. I just put the link in the chat right now. Let's put the link back in that chat one more time right there. There you go. I'm gonna put this in the, I'm gonna go ahead and put this link right now in the description of this video as well, because I just don't want to, uh, I don't want to lose any links. I don't want to mess, mess anything up, miss out on anything that's going on right now. So I guess the first thing, even though I've already said that a thousand times, I guess the first thing I wanted to mention, and this is sort of like a, I don't know, uh, breaking, breaking news. This is new news that I had not heard about before, but it seems that Rhode Island is going to follow suit as well as far as banning flavors. Um, I'm trying to get to the article right now, but my internet seems to be an actual potato at the moment. Okay, fine, here it is. Rhode Island Governor, oh, it's behind a paywall. Oh my gosh. Rhode Island Governor vaping. Yeah, let's get to it. "Rhode Island Governor signs executive order banning the sale of all flavored e-cigarettes in the state." This is from a local, uh, looks like NBC affiliate there, 10 NBC affiliate. Let me put this in the chat as well right there. I'm gonna put this in the description, boosh, right there, but let's continue reading. "Raymondo. Apparently Governor Gina Raymondo on Wednesday signed an executive order to ban the sale of flavored e-cigarettes in Rhode Island. She told the State Department of Health to create the necessary regulations. Until those regulations are in place, flavorings will remain available in stores." So right out of the gate, you can tell that this Governor Gia Raymondo has no idea what she's doing. She's probably seeing people around here like, oh, Massachusetts just, New York just did this. Should we do that? I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna be that same governor that protects the kids from evil flavors. I'm gonna be that same, I'm gonna be that same governor. And right now, we actually don't even know. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe in California, it's not possible for the governor to sort of bypass the legislative process and just declare an emergency and ban a product off of the market. I don't know if that's legal. It might be on a state-by-state constitutional basis of that particular state's constitution. I'm not sure. I don't know what the, I don't know what the legality of that is in Rhode Island, but they're doing it in Rhode Island. And it's really interesting, just this first sentence, "She directed the State Department of Health to create the necessary regulations." Just, "We're gonna ban vaping. You figure out the regulations, and until those regulations are in place, flavoring will remain in the stores." She goes on to say, "I hear from parents and teachers and coaches that the use of flavored e-cigarettes among teenagers and middle school students is alarming and rising and scary." Wow, scary. Everybody's so scared of vapor. Why, I don't know why everybody's so scared of vapor. I don't know why everybody's so scared of vapor. Vapors kept me off of traditional, traditional tobacco cigarettes for the better part of a decade now, and feeling pretty good. Feeling honestly, right now, I'm feeling the best I've ever felt in my entire life. "Raymondio," Gina, and I hope I'm saying her name right, Governor Gia Raymondio, she went on to say, "It looks like cereal boxes," the governor said, holding up a box of strawberry flavorings. "What adults do you know that drink strawberry milk or chocolate milk?" Can I, can I just have a show of hands real quickly in the chat? Like one for yes, two for no. Have you had chocolate milk? Has adult, have adults consumed chocolate milk recently? Strawberry milk recently? Yeah. Oh, shocking. Oh my gosh, it's a wall of ones. I could, it's a wall of ones. It's a wall of ones. So in our very unscientific study that we did just right now, where I polled my subscribers who were all adults of whether or not they've consumed strawberry milk or chocolate milk, the shocking answer was that they have. So to the governor of Rhode Island, I know a lot of adults that have just consumed strawberry milk and/or chocolate milk. Why do they think that chocolate is targeted only at kids? I, this is something I will never understand, and I'm gonna rant about kids in a second. Don't even trip. Don't even worry. Where's my phone? Let me, I'm gonna check in on my guest. Oh, all good, all good. All good, all good, guest. All good, possible future potential guest. I'll never understand that. I'll never understand why they believe that flavors are only, only targeted to kids, you know? And then when you throw that back on them and you say, well, no, adults like flavors, and then, you know, you say, you talk about adults like flavors. That's why we have flavored vodka. That's why adults order dessert. That's why, uh, down at, whatever Pete's Coffee, there's a line around the block of people waiting up to get their caramel frappuccinos. I guess that's Starbucks. I was trying to think something other than Starbucks because I'm such a Starbucks like company line toer, you know? Trying to think, think of something other than Starbucks. People lined up. I personally, when I worked at Starbucks, I sold caramel frappuccinos and strawberries and cream frappuccinos and mint mocha frappuccinos and gingerbread frappuccinos and peppermint frappuccinos to it was like 99% adults. I mean, it could almost been 100% adults, but it's only for kids. Flavors are only for kids. The next time I see an adult with anything sweet in their hand, I'm going to slap it out of their hand, and I'm gonna say, no. Flavors, anything flavored is, is only for kids, only for kids. She said she was not following Governor Charlie Baker's move in Massachusetts where he banned the sale of all vaping products for four months. We're gonna get to that in just one moment here. "You can still vape," she said, "as long as it's not with flavorings." Oh, that's it. That's fine. That's fine. I'm sure that's fine. You can still vape, just not with flavorings. You can still vape, just not with the critical component that makes vaping a successful smoking cessation product. That's like, you can, I took your, I took your tires, but you can still drive. You can still drive. Nothing's stopping you from driving. Just drive. I have your tires. I have the most critical component of the equation, but go, go ahead. Go drive. Go drive. "Raymondo was joined at the short State House briefing by Health, uh, State Health Director Dr. Nicole Alexander Scott. Alexander Scott said the regulations will be put in place by early next week. The emergency ban would be effective for 120 days with the option to extend it 60 days." Seems like arbitrary numbers. Seems like every state is just picking some arbitrary numbers. Uh, in, in Los Angeles, they gave 114 days. In Massachusetts, it seems to be immediate. I still haven't heard one way or the other about New Jersey. I don't think they've actually decided yet. "Wood Socket-based CVS Health released a statement Wednesday applauding her for signing the executive order, saying in part, 'This important action will reduce the number of youths in the state who are exposed to tobacco and other harmful products which can reduce the prevalence of tobacco,'" which, which can reduce the prevalence of tobacco-related diseases and make a significant health impact on the health of our next generation." Hang on, hang on. That sentence made no sense to me. "This important action will reduce the number of youths in the state who are exposed to tobacco and other harmful products which can reduce the prevalence of tobacco-related diseases and make a significant health impact on our next generation." Oh, because vaping causes the tobacco-related diseases. Has everyone in the world forgotten that cigarettes still exist and what cigarettes do to the human body? Can we just, uh, Google this really quick? Damage from smoking. Let's see. Let's see, let's see what, uh, health effects of smoking. Health effects of smoking. Uh, smoking causes stroke and coronary heart disease. That's something they can never put on a vapor product package. Even people who smoke fewer than five cigarettes a day can have early signs of cardiovascular disease. Smoking damages blood vessels, making them thicken and grow narrow. This makes your heartbeat faster and your blood pressure grow up. It can cause strokes, blockages, lung diseases, including COPD, emphysema, chronic bronchitis. Cigarette smoking causes most cases of lung cancer, so glossing over lung cancer. If you have asthma, tobacco smoke can trigger the attack and make your asthma attack worse. Smokers are 12 to 13 times more likely to die from COPD than non-smokers. Now we have a product on the market. I'm gonna do some, a little, just a little bit of Google food research here. We have a product on the market. Oh wait, maybe I bookmarked this one. Hold please. No, okay, I'm gonna have to search for it. I'm gonna have to search for it, but I wanna put this link, I wanna put this link in the description as well. Uh, here it is. This is from, uh, NCBMI, NCBMI. Here we go. Look at that. Boosh, right in the chat. "Vaping reverses the effects of COPD." This is a documented, studied thing that vaping can reverse COPD. And the ironic thing is that in Rhode Island, they want to ban vaping because want people to get COPD? I mean, I can't really think of any other way. I can't really think of any other way to say it than if you wanna ban vaping, you have to just want people to smoke cigarettes, right? That's the only thing that makes sense. It makes a lot more sense when you start talking about the MSA. The Master Settlement Agreement makes a lot more sense. In fact, I heard a fun fact the other day at the LA County Flavor Ban Hearing. Very fun fact at the LA County Flavor Ban Hearing the other day. Turns out that, uh, New York State, dig this. Yeah, I have a pink straw. I don't care. Turns out that New York State is about to default on those, uh, on those tobacco bonds that they sold to Wall Street under the MSA. They're about to default on them. And that is coming, uh, by the end of the year. I've heard that New York is gonna default on their tobacco bonds in December, which would be really bad for the state. Detrimental, financially detrimental to the state of New York if they can't pay back those MSA bonds that they've already spent the money on. Now they're just paying it back, and they're not gonna be able to pay it back. They might default. And the reason that they don't want, I mean, they don't want to default, and the reason that they're eliminating vaping from the state is to get more people smoking cigarettes so they don't default on these tobacco bonds. That's not even a tinfoil hat kind of thing to say. That is a real in-print documented thing that's going on. New York is going to default on their tobacco bonds because they just assumed, like California assumed, that cigarettes would just always be addicting people and, and everybody would always be smoking cigarettes. Always be smoking cigarettes. So that's a, that's a, that's like a solid revenue stream to bet on, right? I mean, if you're a betting man, you're gonna invest in something that addicts people, right? They were counting on cigarette sales, and when those cigarette sales dropped to the lowest smoking rates that the United States, uh, in both the youth and adult category has ever seen, then now people start panicking because they needed that money. They, they kinda needed that money. They, the problem is they already spent the money, and I'm not gonna do a whole refresher here on the MSA, but let's continue. Let's continue real quick here, and I wanna talk about, I wanna finish reading this. I wanna finish reading this quick little article about Rhode Island. Congratulations, Rhode Island. You're on the wrong side of history. Uh, yeah, health of our next generation, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and this is the thing. So this is the problem that we're running into with misinformation. There's just far, far too much misinformation right now. And if you wanna see the effects of misinformation, all you have to do is look at the United States. "The effects of misinformation are rampant and everywhere. Anti-vaxers." You wanna see the effects of misinformation? Let's talk about anti-vaxers. Yeah, anti-vaxers. That is a side effect of misinformation. Another side effect of misinformation is smokers thinking that vaping is worse than cigarettes. Our media and our governments convinced the American people that vapor products, which are saving millions of lives, 13 million vapors in the United States, are worse than tobacco cigarettes. And so if you've noticed throughout this whole thing, why they're banning flavored e-cigarettes, right? I hear from parents, teachers, coaches. So many youths are vaping. It's alarming. It's scary. That's why we're doing this. Look at this. It looks like a cereal box. Do you know any adults that drink strawberry milk? No, of course you don't. "Put these harmful products off the market which can, which can make a significant impact on the health of our next generation." That's the whole guise that they're, they're banning flavors in Rhode Island because of the kids, you guys. It's because of the kids. And then the very last little sentence here, they just lie to you. "The Center for Disease Control and Prevention said more than 500 confirmed improbable cases of lung illnesses and nine deaths nationwide have been attributed to vaping. The CDC has not identified a common product or ingredient responsible for the illnesses." Now that, my friends, is some grade A level horse shit. They're banning flavors under the guise of kids, and then at the very end, they also attribute this flavor ban to the completely non-related topic of contaminated CBD and THC cartridges with vitamin E acetate in them? They just tacked that on right at the end. They're conflating two issues, and that's the thing that was driving me insane at the LA County Flavor Ban. So there you go. That's Rhode Island for right now. I'm gonna, uh, let's read a few super chats. Um, I was trying to only go for an hour today to keep this a little bit shorter and more concise, but it looks like we might be going just a little bit longer, because before we get to our guest, which thank you, guest. I know you're here. We're gonna do this damn thing very, very soon. I wanted to read through some of these super chats before I rant about kids and before I rant about Los Angeles. You know, Stan Z, Stan Z in the chat, uh, asked, "How does Grim Creek keep smiling like that? I would lose my mind." Here's the thing. When I'm off camera, ding, I am losing my fucking mind, bro. I am losing my mind. I have punched more things and thrown more things and yelled and screamed more in the last two weeks than I have ever screamed and yelled and thrown things and punched things in my entire life. I am just as angry. I am just as frustrated as you guys. I am. The problem is I'm too close to this. I'm too close to this because I've been in the vape industry for 10 years, and I remember back in 2009 when there was a few hundred vapors in the United States, and that's all there was. And we thought, wow, you guys, we're gonna change the world. This is gonna change the world, man. It's gonna change the world. I'm too close to it. I'm too invested in vaping. I give too many shits about vaping. I quit smoking with vaping. Everybody should have the ability to quit smoking with far less harmful vapor products. And I don't think that the government and state governments get to decide, oh, you can quit smoking with vaping. It just can't be peach-flavored. You don't get to enjoy it. That's what a lot of this comes down to. I think Matt posted, Matt posted about this on Twitter, is "We're enjoying it and they don't like it because quitting something should be a struggle," you know? It's like when you get clean or you go to rehab or you go to AA. It's supposed to be a struggleful learning experience, you know? And now you can just quit smoking, just with strawberries. Yeah. Quit smoking, and I'm having fun, and I'm enjoying myself. It's like they don't want us enjoying them, enjoying ourselves. Bananas. Okay, so the LA County Flavor Ban. LA County Flavor Ban was yesterday. It was a six, seven hour long, just grinding, grinding day. Just grinding, grinding day. Uh, here's the thing. I'm sorry. I have one question from chat, Brad Collins. "The British studies have no value?" Uh, no, they don't. And that's the problem is, uh, American legislators want American science. That's just the way it is. They tend to ignore a lot of things, much like back in the 50s and 60s when the Royal College of Physicians, they first made that link between smoking and lung cancer, and they're like, holy shit, like, "These biomarkers are undeniable," much like the biomarkers of vaping, "but these biomarkers are undeniable. Smoking absa-fucking-lutely leads to lung cancer, heart disease, COPD, emphysema." First made the link. Royal College of Physicians first made the link, and in the United States, no, we're just smoking. We're a smoking country, and we smoke, and we ignored all of the science from the United Kingdom until many, many, many years later. Finally, American doctors got on board, and then in America, it was like, well, this was, you know, this is absolute. This, how could anybody ever deny that smoking causes lung cancer? How could anybody ever deny that? Well, we denied it for years in the United States while the United Kingdom was telling us that it was true. We were saying no. So now when the United Kingdom is saying, hey, "Look, we're gonna have a smoke-free country by 2030, and you guys are gonna ban vaping." Awesome. Well done, colonies. Well done. It makes me ashamed. It makes me ashamed. It makes me ashamed to be an American. Doesn't make me ashamed of my country because I love my country. It makes me ashamed. It makes me ashamed what the rest of the world is looking at us and just, what? Just what? We should be able to vape. And you know, this, this idea of vices for enjoyment is not a foreign concept in the United States. It's what this country was built on, is personal freedom. The idea that once you turn 21, if you wanna go get fucking blackout drunk, then go do it. Go have fun. You're a free American. You're of age. You can now consume alcohol. If you're underage, it's a criminal offense to be caught with alcohol or drink alcohol or anything like that, right? It's a criminal offense. It's not a criminal offense for cigarettes. It's not a criminal offense for tobacco. It's just, don't do it. Oh, when you do it, well, we're gonna take it away from adults then. That's, that's the way that tobacco control works, and it makes no- That's the, that's the way that tobacco control works and it makes no sense. Yeah, ban sex for pleasure, ban sex for pleasure. Sex should only be in the missionary position solely for the purpose of procreation. No more recreational sex, no more recreational drinking. And cigarettes too. Look, I don't want cigarettes banned, of course not, because we live in America where once you're old enough, you can smoke cigarettes. Everyone will tell you not to, I'll tell you not to, but you can. That's the point is in America, you can. We, we, we have these things for a reason. Alcohol exists for a reason, for free adult Americans to enjoy and consume. The idea that free adult Americans are not allowed to recreationally enjoy and consume nicotine is obscene to me, obscene to me. Okay, okay. Back it up. We do have a guest coming on, you hang tight, bro. Just hang tight right there, we're going to get some, uh, we're going to get some, we're going to get a little bit of information, uh, out of Massachusetts, but I did want to mention briefly the LA County Flavor Ban and I know I talked about the LA County Flavor Ban. I know I've been trying to talk about the LA County Flavor Ban and I keep getting, uh, I keep getting distracted and I haven't even got to rant about kids yet, but that's coming up. So LA County Flavor Ban, just long, long. And so to kind of give you an idea, uh, it was a circus in there, uh, the, the state, what are they called? Los Angeles Board of Supervisors were just completely taken by surprise. They had no idea. So one of the first things on the agenda was this whole like, uh, camping thing, right? They're trying to allow campers in Malibu, but that represents a fire hazard to the city of Malibu. So there were some concerned citizens from Malibu who came and spoke out against this. They said, I don't think we should allow camping in this area. The wildfire danger is too high. We all remember the Woosley Fire and it burned this many acres and we lost this many homes and it caused this many deaths and it shouldn't be allowed. And there was like, I don't know, seven or eight people there, all with like t-shirts that said, no more fires, you know, I'm against this proposition. And there was like eight, seven or eight people there to speak on behalf of that topic. When they got to item four, which was the flavor ban, the, the girl, the chair, Janice Hahn couldn't, she did a double take when she looked down and said, and apparently we have 200, more than 200? She was quest, more than 200, more than 200 people here ready to speak. Two hun, over 200 people showed up to speak out about this. The majority of them were vapors with the exception of the two busloads of children that they, that they, that they just shuttled in, put them in little, uh, anti-vaping t-shirts. One of these kids was like, couldn't have been seven years old, seven years old. To me, that's just, there's no difference, there's no difference in my mind when they prop these kids up there and throw them in the t-shirts and they're like, here, here's your piece of paper, go read it, go read this, go read this up there, go read it up there. You hate flavors, remember, go, go read this up there. There's no difference in that and the Westboro Baptist Church, when you see little eight-year-old kids in, in shirts, it's like, thank God for dead soldiers. That's horrible. It's horrible on both sides. It is, it is ridiculous to me. It's ridiculous to me. And so these kids, uh, these kids get up there and they read their little thing and some of them are, you know, I go to high school and some of my friends, they can't stop vaping their Juul and sometimes they'll go in the bathroom and they'll just vape it a whole bunch and then, and so ban flavors. Right? And then another kid gets up there and goes, there's people getting sick and I don't want my friends to get sick and sometimes they vape their Juuls in, in class and ban flavors. You can't tell me that those kids actually believe that. And so when these, and this wasn't just with kids, when anyone got up there and made some weird, uh, claims, you know, about, uh, there was one lady, well, you know, one of these, one of these pods equals five packs of cigarettes and all the vapors in the room kind of just went, what? Like chuckled, little, little remarks and comments. We got threatened a couple of times, like we were as, as respectable as you can get, 200 vapors in one room, we were respectable. Unincorporated Los Angeles County, not the 88 cities that compromise LA, Google the map. Yeah, they, it, it was, it was the LA County Flavor Ban, but it's not LA County, it's the unincorporated Los Angeles County, which is actually a little bit different of an area. It is a, how do you even mention unincorporated area of Los Angeles? Just Google it, just Google the unincorporated area of Los Angeles. Those kids can't possibly believe that, just like the kid standing in front of the Westboro Baptist Church, wearing a shirt that says, thank God for IEDs and dead soldiers. There's no way that kid believes that. He would have never sought that out on his own. And so some of us, eh, when the kids were done, snicker a little bit, like, come on, like that's, this is, the adults are talking, right? This is a, this is a life and death issue. This is a serious, serious life and death issue. We're dealing with public health, we're dealing with addiction, we're dealing with medical, you know, health committee things. This is, this is an important issue. And look, kids, your opinions have been duly noted, but with all due respect, you're not voters, so get out while the adults talk about this. Is that too harsh? I don't feel like that's too harsh. Kids need healthy parents. Kids should have not been there, period. And so we got reprimanded at the end of it, you know, we got reprimanded at the end before they made their ruling unanimously passing this flavor ban. Before we got, before we got the ruling, um, the, I can't ever remember her name, uh, Janice Hahn. So Janice Hahn is the Chair of Los Angeles, uh, County Board of Supervisors, uh, Hilda Solis, Mark Ridley Thomas, Sheila Cool and Catherine Barger. Yeah, got to know all of these people. We listened to them for six hours plus. At the very end, Janice Hahn, the Chair of the Los Angeles Board of Supervisors, she said, you know, I think it's just awful that you guys were laughing and snickering at these kids in here. They are going out of their way to help public health and learn about the legislative process and you are snickering at them and I think that is just deplorable. I think that is just, you are the worst people for even doing that. And of course, no one can respond because she'll clear the courtroom if anybody says anything. And so we kind of just had to sit there and take it, but the reality of it is, they're not voters. They're not voters. This is an adult issue. This is a serious life and death, civil rights, liberty issue and you parading your kids around here in anti-vaping t-shirts is just icky. It's disgusting. It's disgusting. So again, children, your, your opinion has been duly noted, but the adults are talking. Get the fuck out, out of here. You have no place in here. And honestly, what kind of lesson is that to teach to children that you can just go to the government and just ask them to protect you from things? Please, please ban this, please unilaterally ban this, disregard the judicial process and save me from something, oh mighty big government, can you come and control more aspects of my life? I just wanted one of those kids to get up there and just talk into the mic and be like, uh, hey, uh, my name is Devon and I, and I go to high school and, um, taxation is theft and fuck the state. That's what I want kids to say. I want kids to know that taxation is theft. I want kids to know fuck the state. I don't want kids to be learning, oh mighty government, please protect me, please, please protect me from this thing and it doesn't matter and I don't need my rights and you can just have them, but mighty, mighty government, please protect me from this thing. Is that what we, is that, where are we going as a country when that's what we're teaching kids? Listen, if any, if, right, if anything you think is bad for you, you can ask the government to ban it and they'll protect you from the bad thing, okay? You got all that? Government, big government, they'll protect you from the bad thing as long, yep, yep, they can just do that now, apparently. They can just do that now, apparently. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. There were some really, really, really great testimonies, really, really great testimonies that happened on Tuesday, um, really great testimonies that happened on Tuesday. I mean, I can't even, I can't even think of any specifically because we sat there for literally six hours, six hours. It's, it's obscene. It was a mockery of public health. It was a mockery of science. It was a mockery of the legislative system. 200 people all spoke against this ban and then you go, and oh my God, and the worst part, okay, hang on, hang on buddy, hang on. The worst part, the most infuriating part in my opinion was at the very beginning, they have the, uh, they have the people come out and talk about why this, why this flavor ban was created. And so they have these three experts, right? And she's saying, you know, 30% of high school kids are vaping and she's throwing out all of these crazy numbers, only 1% of adults vape and there's as much nicotine as a pod as there, you know, and now we have, and these numbers just keep getting bigger and bigger and more conflated and more conflated. And she says, even in California, we went and tried to, we, we did our own sting operation, right? We did our own sting operation and we tried to buy flavored nicotine products and we went into 25 shops and all 25 of them sold to underage kids. Didn't, didn't need to prove it, verify it, nothing. She could just say it, just say it. She, yeah, she said 25% of shops failed the sting, shops. Didn't, didn't say if it was, uh, convenience stores, grocery stores, gas stations, vape shops, didn't clarify anything. And, and, and the problem, the problem is, is kids, kids need to shut up, just shut up. We're talking about adult stuff over here, you'll learn all about this later. You can be mad at the government later in life, for now, just go be a kid. Just go have fun with your friends and be a kid and stop letting your parents prop you up in anti-vaping t-shirts and read the script they wrote for you. I really kind of just feel sorry for them. Kind of really just feel sorry for them. I did, I laughed at children in public. No politician would openly scoff at a child, no matter what they say. Yeah, I will openly scoff at a child. I will. I have no, if you're, look, I'm about facts. If you're wrong, you're, you're wrong. That kid is wrong. Not only is that kid wrong, that kid is not a voter and has, you have nothing to do with this. You want to be protected from flavored vapes? Have your parents protect you from flavored vapes. If a kid in school offers you a vape, what do we say? You say no. Or you say yes and you do it and then you, you know, you go, oh, well now I'm addicted. I didn't know there was nicotine in there. Sorry. It was probably not in the best tastes to chuckle at children and I understand that. But the adults have to make these decisions. I'm sick of kids getting in the way of everything. Kids ruin everything. Kids ruin everything. And the hardest part about, I apologize, I am going to get to these super chats and I am going to get to our guest who's going to jump on very, very shortly. Kids ruin everything. Where was I even going with that? I don't even know where I was going with that. I don't even know where I was going with that. Kids and they don't, doesn't, they're not voters, uh, they're not, I don't remember where I was going with that, damn it. I got all sidetracked. I got all sidetracked. Sure, I'll chuckle at a child. Who cares? If they're wrong, they're wrong. Kids ruin everything. Exactly Bonnie. It's not my job to govern someone else's kids and it sure is shit, not the job of the government to babysit everybody's kids. It's, it's, that's bananas to me. That is bananas to me. Once upon a time, wasn't there like, uh, you know, parent groups that would get together and exchange informations about, uh, how to teach their kids certain things or certain topics and things like this, like parental groups? Now, when, when, when some rich suburban mother sees little Draco, I don't know why I said Draco, okay? Harry Potter, sees little Draco with a Juul, instead of reprimanding and punishing your child for having something that they're not supposed to, they, they turn to the government and go, protect my child from this, right? Protect my child from this. That's, that's not democracy, that is ridiculous. That is ridiculous. If, if, if your kid, if you caught your kid with, uh, beer, right? Seventh grade, I'm sure I was drinking beer. Catch seventh grader with beer, what are you going to do? Are you going to punish him? Are you going to reprimand him? Or are you going to go to the government and go, protect my kids from this? Make this less appealing to kids, protect my kids from this. It's obscene, it makes me insane, it makes me insane. So that's what was going on in, uh, that's what was going on in, uh, Los Angeles County yesterday. They did pass the flavor ban, it is in the un, whatever regulated area of Los Angeles. Uh, I didn't, I wasn't able to get to the Burbank hearing just because I literally physically could not get there in time because this other one just went, just went so, so long, so, so long. Um, oh yeah, Aspire Vape Co. is there, a lot of, uh, huge vendors were there, shout out to all the California companies that came out to the LA County Flavor Ban. And yeah, as Aspire Vape Co. pointed out in the comments or in the chat here, um, right before they announced the verdict, all the police officers in the room like, uh, lined up along the front of the room, you know, like, like an armed like, uh, color guard like, hmm, just like an armed, yeah, police across the front of the room before they read the verdict. And I was like, well, that seems excessive. Do they think we're going to riot or something? And if they do think we're going to riot, then maybe we could give a little bit more thought to what's going on here. And here's what this comes down to, one last time. It comes down to a lot of things, right? It comes down to they don't want us enjoying it. It comes down to they don't even understand the technology. It comes down to, it comes down to they don't understand the technology, they don't want us enjoying it and they, I forgot where I was going with that. Son of a bitch. I had such a good thought there too. Maybe I shouldn't be on any other podcast, maybe I, I'm going to go delete my tweet to Joe Rogan and Jamie, just don't even bother. I'm going to, I'm going to forget everything I'm supposed to say anyway. I'm just going to forget everything I'm supposed to say anyway. So the, here's what it comes down to and Wayne talked about this on, on, on Twitter as well from DIY or Die. These are complicated questions, intensely complicated questions that require intensely complicated answers and no one is willing to do the legwork to understand the question. Nobody's doing the legwork to understand the problem. Nobody's doing the legwork to understand that this is going to be a complicated answer to a complicated question. Everybody, and I blame the internet and headlines, everybody wants just a, a, a one, two, it's either, it's either on the market or it's banned. Like those are the only options. It's either on the market or it's banned. It's black and white, it's yes or no. People want these ridiculously simple answers for obscenely, obscenely, obscenely complicated questions. It's not a matter of just, do adults like flavors? It's like, well, yes, adults, adults like flavors, but why do we like vape flavors? It's because smokers and people, people passing these laws and on the health committees, they're not, they, they weren't smokers, they weren't vapors, they don't understand addiction or trying to quit addiction, they don't understand the necessary steps involved, they don't understand, and you know, my wife, my wife is amazing, Casey, my wife is amazing, she made an amazing post on Facebook. Shit, I don't know where it is. She made an amazing post on Facebook, I'll read it on the vlog, but the last thing she said at the end was, forcing a smoker to vape a tobacco flavored e-liquid is like forcing an ex-alcoholic to drink beer flavored water. It's a flavor that we associate with our addiction, it's a, it's a flavor we associate with cigarettes that we're trying to get away from. We don't want the flavor of tobacco. We've had the flavor of tobacco, we're all set with the flavor of tobacco. It's like that making an ex-smoker- It's like that making an ex-smoker vape a tobacco flavor is like making an alcoholic drink lick, drink beer flavored water. That's the last thing they wanna taste. That's the last thing they wanna taste. And it would not be nearly as effective. Could you imagine alcoholics and beer flavored water? That'd be, oh, my lights went out. All right, uh, give me one second to, uh, to do something. I didn't think my batteries were gonna last the whole stream, you know, so I, I was like, oh, they'll be fine, like for at least an hour. No, they didn't. And you know, these batteries, they take a while to charge and it's, uh, it's obnoxious and things like that, but we got my, uh, we got this back. I know, the vapist, I know. I've been saying that for years. But now the aliens game or the FDA game is like, could be right around the corner. In Massachusetts, I think it's immediate. In, in fact, in speaking of Massachusetts, all right, uh, I'm gonna, let me see if I can get, uh, let's see if I can get this, uh, let me see if I can get this guest on here. Where are you at? You gonna answer the phone? You gonna answer the phone? Oh wait, I need my headphones. Hey, there he is. All right. All right, let me get an audio check from you. They can't hear you just yet. Just say, hey, fuckface.
Hey, fuckface.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Oh no, they, they can't hear you. Can they hear you? Can you guys hear him? All right, let's get him up, at least up here on the, uh, on the screen. Look, who's that? That is Nick Baset, Daily Vape TV over here. How you doing today, Nick Baset, Daily Vape TV?
I am exhausted.
You're exhausted? I'm exhausted. We're all exhausted. You wanna talk about, uh, shit, you wanna talk about Mass? What's going on in Mass, Nick Baset? You're, you're in Mass, right? I'm not crazy.
Um, so I am based out of Mass.
Yes.
Currently, I'm in Connecticut. I live right on the border of Mass and Connecticut. My shop is five hundred yards from the border of Massachusetts, which is where I'm at right now.
Oh, wow. Wow. Scary times up there.
You're telling me.
Yeah. So basically this governor, this governor that, this governor, this shitbag governor, I can't even remember his name. What's the, what's the ma, what's the governor of Massachusetts name, Nick Baset?
Charlie Baker.
Yeah, Charlie Baker. So Charlie Baker did, uh, he did what, what New York did and what Michigan did and just had this executive emergency thing and just banned vaping, right? It's not just flavors, it's everything, isn't it?
Oh, they banned everything.
It's everything. It's liquid, it's hardware, it's, it's anything that is, you know, quote unquote, a vapor product, right?
Yep.
And they gave the states or they gave the shops anytime?
No notice.
No notice. Zero notice. Can everybody hear Nick okay? I just wanna make sure he's loud enough. And so does this, see, I know, I don't know, I'm looking to you for a little bit more answers just because I don't have a clear picture of what things are like in Massachusetts because I was dealing with Los Angeles all day yesterday. But it's, from what I understand, it's, it's, it's an immediate thing? Just right away? It's already happened? Have they, they've been sending people to shops?
They've been sending, uh, boards of health people to shops to make sure they're complying. Yesterday, I've heard reports of people, uh, having state police come to their shop and shutting them down.
State police come to their shop, shutting them down. Are they, are they taking the flavored vapor products? Are they disposing of the, of the vapor products? Are they seizing them?
No, they're not seizing or anything like that. They're just making sure they're complying in that they're putting all the stuff in the back or boxing it up or what have you.
Wow. Wow. Have you spoken to anybody in any shops in Mass? Is your shop in Massachusetts?
So we have a unique situation based on our geography. So we had one shop in Massachusetts, right over the border in Mass. And we have one right over the border in Connecticut. So we had to shut down our shop in Mass. We stayed open till midnight last night in Massachusetts. And Connecticut was not only crazy busy yesterday because some, some people, some shops closed down their doors as soon as this happened. And basically told people they couldn't sell to them, so everyone came here.
Yeah, well, and I mean, I don't blame them for that. That's, that's, that's terrifying. It's terrifying for the, the governor to just go, oh, you, you're out of business. That's basically what he, what he handed off. He said, all you guys are out of business now.
Yes.
Because, you know, they talk about it like it's a, it's a four-month ban, right? Four-month ban. That's it. Who, who are you talking to? Bring them on.
It's my boss.
Okay. So they're talking about like a four-month ban?
Right.
And that's, but that's, what shop can survive four months being closed?
None, none. I mean, there's no shop that can survive not selling their entire inventory for four months.
Yeah, exactly. No shop can do that. And so are employees being let go, kept? I mean, I don't know if whatever priv, information you're privy to tell me, but I, I have a feeling there's gonna be a lot of job loss?
I mean, it's kind of a special circumstance with our shop because we do have a store over, uh, the border.
Yeah.
That's the same ones as the.
Are you in your shop right now? Are you working right now?
This is the shop. We are insanely busy.
He's insanely busy right now. So Nick Baset needs to get back to work. Nick Baset needs to get.
I'm good. We got, um, we got people here. I, I need to spread the word, man. I need to tell people what's going on. I need to let everyone know what's happening.
Yeah, we do. And so Massachusetts, four months, what are the odds? Would you say that they're just gonna start extending this like on a month-by-month basis? Like when the four months is up, oh, five months? Now, now we're extending it.
Option. That is an option.
They have an option? Do they have, do they have like, um, an end, like it can only be extended this long?
No.
No.
Not that, not to my knowledge. We, we weren't privy to any information before this. It was press conference, close your shop. So no, no notice.
They didn't contact the shops in any capacity? Let them know, give them a heads up of, of what was going on that's just closed?
Just, yeah, close down. Take your stuff off the shelf.
Take your stuff off the shelf. Um, so has, have people been, I mean, you said your shop across the border is, is much busier. Do you, obviously you think that's due to Massachusetts.
Oh, a hundred percent. People are shocked right now. They're literally in shock. Coming into the shop going, well, I went to my normal shop and it was closed, so this is the only other one I could find, you know?
Wow. That's crazy. That is, I hate that. I can't stand that. Now, has anything, do you know of anything that's kind of been coming out? Uh, has anybody talked about Connecticut? Is Connecticut a future? I mean, not today?
So today, the governor of Connecticut is meeting with Cuomo.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Oh, perfect. So say that again. Say that one more time. What's the governor of, uh, of, of where you're at there in Connecticut?
He's meeting with the governor of New York to discuss this topic, this issue.
Yeah, so, yeah, today, that's happening today. So one could speculate that Connecticut, after talking with Governor Cuomo, could be headed down the same path. Rhode Island just announced it as well today.
Rhode Island is today. Connecticut could be tomorrow or the next day. That's my speculation.
Tomorrow or the next day. So and, and the messed up thing, and, and this is, this is why my heart's breaking for vape shops across the country because like you said, you got, you got no heads up. There was no, uh, no, no letters, no warnings of we might be enacting this, uh, I'm sorry about your business, nothing like that. So there's shops in Connecticut right now that are just in a holding pattern. And there's a chance that whatever date that they say, like it's, oh, it's a six-month ban or I'll give you a hundred and twenty days to sell off all your product before you have to close.
Yeah, I, we, we're, we would be lucky if we got two weeks. We would count our blessings for two weeks' notice.
And, and at which point, Nick Baset, you would, you would probably be, uh, out of a job? Still have a job? Out of a job?
Most, more than likely out of a job. There's no way a vape shop can survive without selling vape stuff. I mean, we, we do sell a little bit of CBD, but we're not set up to sell and, and, you know, maintain our normal business, especially taking on our mass employees into the Connecticut store.
Yeah.
To just sell CBD. It's just not gonna happen.
Yeah, that's not, that's not sustainable. It's ridiculous that they think a business can even survive like that.
But they don't know about the, well, they know about the standalone shops, but let's face it, they don't care about the standalone shops. They're thinking more or less for like the convenience stores and the other places that sell vape stuff, just as like, you know, a little thing behind the counter. Not a vape-only location.
Right. And that's part of the problem too, is that they don't understand these vape-only locations. They, I feel like they see everything as like a, a seedy, like C-store type of thing, you know?
Yeah. They see it pod systems. They see it like, oh, well, they don't know what's going on. I mean, even in the press conference with Charlie Baker, he said, uh, something like they're putting THC in these e-cigarettes and that's what's causing all this. So he doesn't know what's going on.
Yeah, I, I, I feel like most politicians are just talking out of their ass and I, I don't blame them for not understanding the technology because even when you're in, even when you first get into vaping, it's a little bit confusing, you know? You're like, well, what's, what's a dripper? What's an RTA? Subom tank? Do I need a subom tank? Like liquids and milligrams and, and different things like this. It, it is a little bit confusing, but it's not impossible to grasp.
Sorry about the phone, man.
They're, uh,
Hooked today, by the way.
I, yeah, he seems, he seems busy, guys. Nick Baset seems too busy. Let me ask you one more question here, Nick Baset. I'll let you get back to work. I appreciate you coming on the stream to talk. Have people from Mass been shopping casually or is this like a, I'll take all the three milligram of this liquid that you have?
Um, I would say over the average amount. So people, I've been telling people like, look, we might not last in Connecticut for very much longer, so you probably should think about stocking up if you can.
Yeah. Stocking up. People are stocking up. And are there any shops, uh, closer to you that they could still get to? I mean, I guess in Connecticut, if that shop, you know, if Connecticut passes it, then then no shops in the state will be safe. What's, I mean, what's like the nearest shop that people could go to, considering that they probably would have to drive like two hours to get there?
Yeah, uh, Vermont and New Hampshire. And New Hampshire, I believe, has a forty percent wholesale tax on their liquids, so I don't they're gonna be touching that anytime soon, but again, who knows?
Dang.
Yeah.
Dang, Nick Baset. Well, hey, you know, thank you for coming on. I appreciate you taking time out of your busy workday to, to talk, to talk to me. I appreciate it. Uh, I'm, I'm saddened to hear about Massachusetts. I'm saddened that that shop in Massachusetts is closed. I'm awaiting to hear whatever happens in Connecticut, so shit, man, fingers crossed. All my good vibes headed to, uh, to Nick Baset over there in, uh, Connecticut. Did a, did a fly just fly out of your mouth? Is that what just happened right there?
Oh, yeah, I, you know, you don't have that in your office. How do you not have fruit flies, man? We eat fruit flies easy.
I don't know. That must be an East Coast thing. Ah, I don't know. Anyway, uh, Nick Baset, thank you. Thank you for coming on. I appreciate your input and, uh, I'll let you get back to work now, dude, okay?
All right, man. Thanks for having me on. Thanks for letting me tell my side of the story and appreciate your support and I'll let, I'll keep you up to date on everything that's going on, man.
I'll, I'll hit you up for information about everything over there in the Connecticut area. And for anybody that doesn't know, this is Nick Baset. He runs, uh, Daily Vape TV over there on the Youtubes. You've been doing that how many years now? You've been doing that a while.
Over five years, yeah.
Yeah, five years. Nick Baset, Daily Vape TV. Check it out. And, uh, Nick, thank you. We'll talk to you soon, okay? Okay, bud. See you, dude. Bye. Yeah, there was Nick Baset, Daily Vape TV, and he's over there in Connecticut. He's over there in Mass. I know, Nickception. And yeah, Nick, Nick Baset's great. He's always been just one of the most cool, genuine dudes for me. I always, I always feel like he deserves a bigger following because he really, he's one of those people that really truly does, truly does give a shit. So yeah, Massachusetts is immediately, Massachusetts is immediately, they have already closed their store in Massachusetts. That's insane. That is in, I need another word other than insane. Insane doesn't even begin to describe the situation going on right now. You wanna talk about Michael Bloomberg? All right, if we have time to talk about Michael Bloomberg after I get through these, uh, super chats, then we will definitely talk about Michael Bloomberg because Michael Bloomberg is another like, thanks, rich people. Thanks, rich people for ruining things. Why can't you all be cool, rich people like Tony Stark or, or, or Bruce Wayne or, I mean, we have so many billionaires and no superheroes. We have billionaires that just want more money and they're gonna do it by destroying an industry. Chaotic is a good word. Unfathomable. Ryan Hudson, Civil War 2.0. How is that even, I know. Yeah, Fresh Build Fridays, that's him. He used to do Fresh Build Fridays. Dash Vapes in the house. I didn't, I haven't watched your newest, uh, video yet, Dash Vapes. I apologize. I'm gonna get through some of these super chats right now, you guys. Uh, Joe, very gracious of you. They wanna make a big stink right before the primaries and elections. Yeah. That's the fucked up part is draconian, Anthony. Wow, very well said. That's the really messed up part is, this is a public health issue. Like I said, we're dealing with life and death stuff here. Kids, you can wait outside while the adults make decisions. And vaping has become like this political thing, this political soapbox that people get on now, you know? And it's like, we gotta save the kids from vaping and that's just a political little soundbite there. And then everybody, you know, all the suburban mothers who, who are anti-vaping, they go, oh, you know, I like that politician because he said he's gonna save the kids from vaping. It's like a political issue now and it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be a partisan issue. It shouldn't be a political issue. It should literally be, the science says this. Here's how we're gonna implement it. Here's how we're gonna save lives. Here's how we're gonna encourage adult smokers to switch to vapor products. This is what they're doing in the UK. This is what they're doing in a lot of the European Union. This is what they're doing in New Zealand. This is what they're doing in Japan. It's fear mongering by definition and it's fear mongering, it's confusing fear mongering. The, the great thing, and I use great with a lot of, you know, a lot of heavy air quotes on there, a lot of sarcasm right there. The great thing is that in 2019, it's easy to just be confused as hell because there's so much media coming at you from all these different directions. And if people are just confused and they can't make up their mind, to me, that is a much better stance to take than, I hate it. Ah, man, hate it. Vaping is the worst. Vaping is worse than cigarettes. I understand confusion. I don't understand taking such a hard line on something in spite of the overwhelming evidence to the contrary. We need, all I care about right now is freedom, liberty and science-based legislation. And I feel like that's not too much to ask from our elected officials. You know, and I was telling this to, uh, to Governor Gavin Newsom from California on Twitter because there was a video of him and he's like, he, he looks so disappointed in this video. He just looks so upset. He's doing this press conference and he's like, well, you know, turns out that I don't have the power to just ban vaping. As much as I would like to, uh, I ju, it's something I can't do. We do actually have to go through the legislature. And I'm like, no shit, bro. Those checks and balances are in place in the system to protect me from you, to protect me from doing what you're trying to do. If you don't see this as, I mean, sorry I'm yelling. Sorry I'm yelling. The headphones sometime, the, look, the headphones sometimes make me yell and I'm sorry about that. But if you don't see this as just a blatant governmental overreach, then man, I got some news for you because we're giving them an inch, they're taking a mile. If they ban flavors and, and get away with it, just test the waters with this one little thing, it's like they all got together and went, let's try to ban vaping. Okay, what are they gonna do? We could just ban it. Executive powers, emergency. We can just declare an emergency, use our executive powers and ban vaping. And if we can do that, what's to stop them from anything else? What's to stop them from saying, oh, nope, sugar, sugar's making. What's to stop them from saying, oh, nope. Sugar, sugar's making too many fat people. From now on, black coffee. That's all you get. Black coffee. No more frappuccinos. Sorry. Too many, too much diabetes in the country. No strawberries and cream frappuccinos. Which by the way, a venti strawberries and cream frappuccino from Starbucks back in the day was over a thousand calories in that cup. If you got it with whipped cream, it peaked out at like 1,200 calories. It's insane. But you know what? We live in America where you're allowed to drink a 1,200 calorie strawberries and cream frappuccino every day if you want to. It's America. It's liberty and justice for all. All right. Well, we only got through one super chat there, Joe, but I appreciate that. Daily vape TV. That's right, bro. Hashtag vaping saves lives. Hashtag adults like flavors. Uh, we got Wesley here. Hello. Hello. The unicorn drink phase. Yeah. Hello. The unicorn drink phrase. Yeah. I remember the unicorn frappuccino from Starbucks. I wasn't working there, but that was, I don't know, adults buying it? Was Starbucks marketing to kids? Did Starbucks get called out for marketing fat and sugar and calories to kids? We know sugar is painfully addictive. I myself am a sugar addict. And I make no, uh, I make no reservations about that. Sugar is a hideous bitch goddess of an addiction. Oh, strawberries and cream frappuccino. No more strawberries and cream frappuccinos. Executive order. I've declared an emergency of obesity. And now you can only drink black coffee. We're pulling all flavored coffee products off the market. You let us do it with vaping. People are gonna wake up. I mean, people, the nannies will try that next. The nannies will try something next. It's not gonna end with vaping. What's to stop them? Seriously, if they get away with this, which they can't get away with this, but if they get away with this, if, if Governor Cuomo gets away with this and just all he needs to do is declare an emergency and then use his executive power to ban something. Bullets. What if he did that? What if he just banned all bullets? We're not taking your guns, you guys. You still have the second amendment. The second amendment doesn't mention ammunition. It only mentions guns, to bear arms, doesn't mention ammunition. We're banning ammunition. We're banning the dangerous part of the gun. And everyone would be in a panic. And then vapors would be going, look, we tried to warn you. We tried to warn you guys. They can just do this. Cooking with Kirby. Here's some money out of my, I get talking too much and, uh, I gotta drink out of my pink straw. Here's some money out of my beer budget. Whoa, that's, look, thank you. That is cherished money right there. My favorite flavors are very berry strawberry custard, peppermint chocolate and cherry limeade. You know what? Cooking with Kirby. Those all sound spectacular. Joshua, very gracious of you. What about adult chocolate milk and chocolate wine? Is that for kids too? I don't know. Maybe. Who, who can even keep up anymore about what flavors are for kids and what flavors, you know? I've had the chocolate wine. I'm assuming it's for adults. Can we, can, can we sue like Schmirnoff? Could we sue a vodka company for their, over their flavors and marketing to kids and cite, you know, alcohol death statistics and say your products are killing, you know, 2,000 people, 2,000 underage youths a month? Could we sue them? Feel like we could. I feel like there's a strong case right now for suing Schmirnoff over flavors. If nothing else, just to make an example of this whole situation. Joshua, very gracious of you. Uh, Justin, I'm going to buy a long black trench coat, line it with flavored vape and stand out on the corner. I love flavors, hence I'm fat. Here's the thing. I don't care if you're fat. I love flavors too. I love flavors too. And, uh, just, yeah, I, I highly recommend doing that. That's what the black market's gonna look like. That's what the black market's gonna look like. Or, you know, you can just go on Reddit, create a private subreddit, sell vape stuff. There you go. And I don't know, can, I don't know, can anybody clarify maybe in the chat? Um, about, is it online sales as well in, 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 in Michigan, or in Michigan, Rhode Island, Massachusetts? Anything like that? I haven't heard. In California, in Los Angeles, they made a very specific point repeatedly that this wouldn't be for online sales. And I think the chairperson just kept saying that. It is online sales, Tiff. It is online sales. See, they kept saying, and she kept like expecting a reaction, you know? It's like she was telling us that. So we would go, oh, well, then that's okay then, you know? You can ban flavors in LA county, just as long as we can still get it online. No, that's unacceptable. That's unacceptable on so many levels. Unacceptable. Unacceptable. But if you're in California, you can still, uh, order liquids online. You can still order flavored vapor products online because everybody knows that kids don't know how to use the internet. Everybody knows that. Gregory, very gracious of you. Didn't say anything, but I'm gonna shout you out anyway. S- scotch? Yeah. Flavors are just for kids. That's why protein mixes are usually flavored. All those muscly kids walking around because of flavored protein. Yeah, exactly. If it's the flavors that are attracting, uh, youths to vapor products, then why isn't, uh, flavors attracting them to nicotine gum? Or protein powder? I've had chocolate vanilla milkshake protein powder before and it's kinda gross, but it's flavored. Their logic means that kids should be just swarming to, to nicotine gum, right? Mint. That's what mint is their favorite. Kids initiate with mint. Really? Well, then why aren't they, uh, raiding, uh, nicotine gum anywhere? All right. Uh, wait, wait, we have a, we have a, this just in news. Okay. Wait, what is this? This just in via Omboy OC. This is a HuffPost article, so take that for what it's worth. But the big headline on the top, and I'll let you all see this too. We're just gonna read this. FDA won't ban flavored e-cigarettes. Commissioner says during a hearing Wednesday, that's today. Ned Sharpless responded to congressional calls for an outright ban by saying his agency will enforce existing law. The head of the Food and Drug Administration told the House Energy and Commerce Committee in a hearing on Wednesday that the agency will not issue an outright ban on flavored e-cigarettes despite mounting calls from lawmakers to do so. Act, oh, go away, ad. A court, uh, Acting FDA Commissioner Ned Sharpless said his agency will enforce existing laws when it comes to the sale of flavored e-cigarettes and vapes, which have become the subject of public consemination as they've been linked to a spat of illnesses and deaths across the country. Flavored e-cigarettes have not been linked to a spat of illnesses and deaths across the country. No one vaping a flavored nicotine product ended up in the hospital. No one vaping a flavored nicotine product got lipoid pneumonia. I don't know why. It's, it says spate, but it came out spat both times. And I've never used the term spate, so I don't exactly know what that means. But the FDA commissioners guarantee that he will enforce existing laws stopping short of an outright ban on flavored e-cigarettes. Existing laws put a halt on marketing such items until manufacturers can demonstrate that marketing their products is appropriate and to the protection of public health, Sharpless said. So now it's not even just a marketing law, like in the UK, they have very rigorous marketing laws and marketing rules about how you can and can't market your products. This is more like you can't market your product. What, what does it even say? They will have, market their products. They, oh, so it's gonna be judging their marketing. So if, if the FDA doesn't feel that their marketing is appropriate for the protection of public health, then that's when I guess there's going to be an issue. Companies will have until May 2020 to apply with the FDA for a license to do so, according to Bloomberg. Mr. Bloomberg and his own vape product that he's bringing out. Yeah. He is. Thanks, rich people. Ban or not, the vape industry is in a state of upheaval over regulations and health concerns. Kevin Burns, CEO of the popular e-cigarette company Jewel Labs stepped down on Wednesday at state and federal governments crackdown on the industry and its marketing practices. So the marketing, the marketing practices of vape companies are not what has landed people in the hospital. The marketing practices of vapor companies are not what has landed people in the hospital with lipoid pneumonia. The marketing practices of flavored nicotine products has not killed anybody. Zero. That's the number. You wanna know how many people have died from vaping nicotine, flavored nicotine? The answer is zero. That's this many. That's, that's, uh, that's this many, right there. Big old zero. Nothing. Nothing. All right. Put that link in the description. Put that link in the chat. Where did my chat go? Where did my description go? Where am I? What is life? Let's get back to these super chats, you guys. Thank you, Dwayne, for, uh, pardon me, burp life. Thank you, Dwayne, for, uh, for sending that over. There's still a bunch of super chats that, uh, this has already gone on an hour and a half. How is this real life? Blood rage engage. How is this real life? I, I don't even know. And if you're here now, you guys, don't forget to smash that like button. I'm a bad YouTuber and I never ask people to subscribe and I never say smash the like button. So if you're here, smash the like button. And if you're here and you've never been here before, just, bro, subscribe. We have fun times over here. Fun times over here. Okay. Let's get back here. Let's get back to these super chats because there's a bunch of them. Yep. Protein. One more from Joe. Merging evidence, uh, suggests that COPD smokers who quit or reduce tobacco consumption substantially by switching to electronic cigarettes are likely to gain significant health benefits. Yep. Uh, reverses. It, that's not even just gain sufficient health benefits. Vaping straight up reverses COPD. Straight up, straight up reverses it. Elliot Markley, I, I am 30 years old and I picks up some twisty liquids, watermelon madness. Loving it. Elliot, that sounds delicious. Enjoy that twisty liquids, watermelon madness. David, very gracious of you. Spent today doing an emergency shutdown of my favorite store before the Gestapo took the product by civil forfeiture. Saddest day of my life, life. Sad to be an American today. MA is a failed state run by a dictator. I, David, my heart breaks for you. My heart breaks for every vape shop in a state right now that is being run by this Gestapo dictators that can just circumvent the entire process of checks and balances to personally rip away your freedoms. Were you using that liberty? Sorry, it's mine now and I'm gonna sell it to Pfizer. Yeah, the government is taking our freedom. Exactly, Joe. So what? Is the government taking our freedoms? Technically yes, but so what? Anthony, very gracious of you. The cannabis, cannabis industry has been fighting for years with science. And now I feel that vaping is in the same boat. Large corporations will win until people become more important than profits. Do you ever see that happening in the United States of America? And look, bro, I am a capitalist. I am a capitalist to the core. Human lives are always, always more important than profits, always more important than profits. Unless you're greedy and that's the problem is there's just greed. There is just rampant greed everywhere. It makes, it makes me sick. Makes, makes me sick. Who's this? Also this. Oh, this is from Chloe. There, there was some good news though. I'm gonna, uh, give me a sec there, Chloe. Read this. Um, Texas Cloud Town, very gracious of you. I love Reggie Nick rant, rant, rant. Yo, yo, hell yes. Look, I don't love doing it. I don't love ranting. Okay. I'm not gonna lie. I kinda like ranting. I've been looking forward to the stream because I wanted to rant about kids. Get the fuck out of the room, kids. The adults are talking. You're not a voter. You don't get to decide this. You don't. I, I thank you for your concern. You're not a voter. There's a reason why you have to wait until you're an adult so you can make informed decisions before you can do things like vote or smoke cigarettes or drink gummy flavored vodka. Are teens vaping? Technically yes, but so what? I agree, Matt Sinister. Youth smoking rates are the lowest they've ever been in the history of the United States of America and nobody is celebrating that. Jonathan Jest, very gracious of you. You didn't say anything, but I'll fist you, fist you. Wow. That came out, uh, regardless. Thank you, Jonathan Jest. The FBNL, props for Grim and wishing you guys the best from the Netherlands. Every day more than 1,300 Americans die slowly from proven tobacco related sicknesses. That's slow and painful. Nine 11 every two days. Slow and painful deaths. Beauty in the vape, very gracious of you. Kids ruin everything. Make vasectomies mandatory. 100%. Uh, mothers against vaping is a freaking joke. Get a power supply, damn it. Look, Stan, you might have all your whatever dreamer money, but I can't afford a power supply right now. I have a charger and batteries and it works fine. It works fine. Nick Seption, that's right, British eyes. Gently E, very gracious of you. Tudor's vape shop intends to stand our ground against this oppression. We only sell to adults and they all vape flavors. We have been bullied more than we can tolerate. See you on the inside. PS, Nick looking sharp as usual. Thank you very much. You know, I've been doing, uh, I've been doing a lot of pushups lately, you know? I'm not trying to brag. I mean, I'm not trying to be Dwayne or nothing, but I'm trying, you know, I'm doing some pushups lately. I appreciate that. And shout out to Tudor's vape shop. I love that. I love that you're gonna stand your ground and it's true. We have been bullied more than we can tolerate. And that's what this is coming down to. We're standing up to bullies. We're standing up to bullies. Isn't that what Melania wanted for us was to stand up to bullies? Ban flavors, eat toilet paper and dirt cannoli. Cardboard, cardboard. Give you some toilet paper. Dirt cannoli. Beauty in the vape, support the call to action for Connecticut so the surrounding states have a safe haven to go to. Is there a call to action for Connecticut? I'll get, I'll make sure that gets up there as, as many places as I can. Beecher Howard, donate this money. Everyone needs it to keep it up. Thank you, Beecher. Keep it up, Beecher. Keep it up. Very gracious of you, Beecher. Very gracious of you. I'll give that $100. Uh, to me. I'm taking that money, Beecher, and you can't stop me. Welcome to the Grim Green MSA. That's right. I steal money. Just kidding. Matt Sinister, very gracious of you. Not only do vapes, not only do vapes have to not vote for these hacks, but we also have to learn who their sponsors are and not buy their products, i.e. Walmart, McDonald's. Yeah. I mean, look, we can initiate change and I can't stress that enough to you guys. This is going on way too long already. I was expecting this to be a one hour show, but I just get so fired up and I just get so talky that it just ends up going way too long. Uh, yeah, look, Matt Sinister, there's 13 million of us nationwide now. We have the overwhelming ability to initiate some very, very real, real change. And all we need to do is just do it. We need to all one day go, hey, guys, we're calling the Massachusetts governor today, happening today, happening today, right now. We're gonna do it right now. Everybody bomb him. Call bomb him. That's what we can do. Those, there's powers in numbers. We have the numbers, you guys. We have the numbers. Ohio rally, October 1st, Columbus State House, 10:30. Tiff. Everybody get that? There's an Ohio rally, October 1st, Columbus State House, 10:30. I'm assuming that's AM. Could be PM. They could be going for like a late night rally, although that doesn't make as much sense to me. But I'm assuming that's a 10:30 AM rally. Tiff, thank you very much. Bonnie Jean, very gracious of you. AVA board says a state court lawsuit was filed today by the Vapor Technology Association. Expect news on Michigan soon as well as Massachusetts. They said, well, look, the VTA is serious about this. Uh, the VTA, this is one of the things that the VTA Uh, the VTA, this is one of the things that the VTA does. They are ahead of the game. Um, they're getting into New York and filing lawsuits. They're going to get into Michigan and file lawsuits. They're going to get into Massachusetts and file lawsuits. VTA is one of the companies as vendors need to get behind the VTA. For us, for consumers, we support, we need to support CASA and vendors need to support the VTA. That's, that's the way that this is going to work, the absolute best possible way. Uh, Gently E, very gracious of you. Very gracious of you. Remember Rosa Parks? She stood her ground too. PS, donation battle. Uh-oh. Well, I guess we're giving some money to, uh, CASA tonight as well. They are cleaning up. Hang in there, banned victims. Vape lives matter. Chasing clouds and flavor reviews. Absolutely. You get a fist bump for that one. Tim J, very gracious of you. F'ing communism is all it is. They can suck a bag of what, Nick? They could suck a bag of dicks, Tim J. That's what they can do. Very gracious of you. Ian Thomas, you didn't say anything, but I'll shout you out right there. Tenacious TX vape stands back in the chat. What are you doing here, Stan? Uh, that just means the BS FDA PMT crap is still going to be enacted, right? Yes. That's what he means, dude. Yeah, uh, PMTA, May 2020, that's it. Um, I, I have seen some literature from the, from the FDA recently that was mentioning how, um, their, their prediction, the FDA's prediction, and you know, Ned Sharpless can, can go talk about how they're not going to enact a flavor ban and then all the vapors are going to go, oh, thank you, Ned. Thank you, FDA, for not enacting that flavor ban. Still have the PMTAs coming up in May 2020 and the FDA themselves predict that three companies are going to be able to successfully acquire pre-market tobacco applications. Three. They predicted three PMTAs will go out. Three. So Ned can take his non-flavor ban and spoon feed it to Jerome Adams. I don't even know where I'm going with that. I was trying to be funny. Spencer, very gracious of you. Wow, I never imagined it would come to this severe of a ban. Here's some birthday money for the good fight. Hashtag cool kids club. Damn right, Spencer. Damn right. Angela, very gracious of you. Very gracious of you. Crimson, very gracious of you. Served an 80-year-old woman in my shop last week, smoking 30 a day for the last 50 years. Packed up a starter kit and she hasn't wanted to sit, she hasn't wanted a cig since. She told me she hasn't felt this healthy in many years. Yes. See, this, this is our tactic. I've just discovered it. I've just realized this. This needs to be our tactic. We need to shift the narrative to adults vaping. We need like over 70s. We need like over 60-year-old people vaping. Adults, you know, like adult adults. Like responsible adult adults. We need over 60s. We need them vaping. We need them to be talking about it. We need to get them on video. There was a great video. I have it somewhere on my computer. I was going to show it in this stream, but you know, the time got away from us. And she is, uh, going on and on about how vaping has helped her and flavors and at the end she says, please don't ban my favorite bubblegum flavor. I'm sorry, but that is, I feel so much more, like that's so much more of a genuine thing. I feel so much more sincerity from, eh, eh, from this, from this, you know, 70-plus-year-old woman who just wanted her bubblegum flavor. I feel so much more sincerity in that than the 10-year-old wearing the no flavors shirt reading, I'm, I go to high school and some of my friends are, and they love mango and they vape it all the time. And once I even saw one of my friends vaping it in class, you should ban flavors. Horse shit. Horse shit. Joey the Vapor Vapor, big love from Arizona. Damn. Big love from Arizona. Keep fighting the good fight. Love you, bro. Joey the Vapor, I don't, I don't really know you. I love you too, bro. We're all on the same team. We're all in this together. It seems it's time to fight kids with kids. Yeah, we're going to, we're not only going to fight kids with kids, we're going to fight kids with grandparents. That's my strategy. I want grandparents vaping. I want grandparents on video talking about flavors and how vaping helped them. And that is so much more compelling to me because they have much better stories. Old people are way cooler than kids. Far and away cooler than kids. They have all the cool stories. They've seen all the cool bands. Old people, way cooler than kids. Way cool. And that's what we need. That's what we need. We need them on video. We need them talking and we need, we, we, that's what we need. Also kids, I think we should fight kids with kids. I think every vapor that, as a kid, then I think we should use that. Thanks. I'm glad my mom doesn't smoke cigarettes anymore. I'm glad my dad doesn't smoke cigarettes anymore. Can you imagine how powerful that would be if a kid was like, I'm really glad that my dad doesn't stink like an ashtray anymore. I'm glad that my dad can play with me in the yard now. I'm glad that we can go on hikes with my mom now. I'm glad that my mom doesn't have COPD anymore. So much more compelling, so much more compelling. David, very gracious of you. I'm going to shout you out. Rebecca, very gracious of you. Thomas, I watched the live when Sharpless was getting hammered. He said all flavors will be pulled. Jay Hayes has the timestamp. Alright, well, now we have conflicting reports of that all flavors will be pulled and then we have, uh, this article from BuzzFeed, from HuffPo, that says that they will not be banned and he is only going to continue the path of enforcement of the already existing regulations. They make it confusing on purpose. Elliot Markley, uh, if I can sign up to die in battle at 18, I should be able to drink, smoke and vape flavors if I want to. God damn it, this is America. Liberty and justice for all, Elliot. Liberty and justice for all. Ian, very gracious of you. I feel guilty living in Arizona. Yep. Arizona. Uh, Doug Ducey, Doucay? Doug, Doug, Dookie? Ducey? He doesn't have a great last name to say. It's either Dookie or Ducey and both of those are kind of a little bit poop related. Uh, he came out and said he's not banning flavors, said it's unreasonable. More representatives should follow. So yeah, here's what we're going to do right now. This is what we're going to do right now. Uh, Doug Ducey. I am going to put, uh, Doug Ducey, this is the governor of Arizona. I'm going to put his Twitter in the chat and I'm going to put his Twitter in the description of this video eventually. We need to go thank him. Every, if you're on Twitter, just go on Twitter, tweet at the governor of Arizona and thank him for being a reasonable person and for protecting adult access to far less harmful vapor products. When a politician does something awful, we all like pile on and when a politician does something good, we need to celebrate that. And I'm not saying he's a great, amazing politician. I'm not saying he's going to be the savior of the vaping industry, but we do need to thank him. We do need to thank him for what he is doing. We have to thank him. We have to, especially if you're in Arizona. No flavor ban in Arizona. He said it's unreasonable. He didn't even take a like, he didn't even take the like, well, we just don't know what the problem is and there's no one ingredient that is making these people sick. Uh, they reported vaping nicotine as well. So just as a precautionary measure, we're going to ban everything while we investigate it. No, none of that. No wishy-washy. Just, that's unreasonable. Right out of the gate, Doug's like, nah, come on, that's unreasonable. It is unreasonable, Doug. It is. And we all need to thank him. Are you getting proc, you're getting rage sweat by proxy? Appreciate that, British eyes. Uh, Ashes the Greenwich, strawberry shortcake could eat liquid. Yep, sorry. Strawberry shortcake e liquid, help me quit cigs. Yep. Root beer. For me, it was root beer. Oh my Lanta, Dan, how are you doing? Michigan has a bill right now. They propose a huge, they propose to cap the nicotine at 20 milligram. No more flavors would be allowed. This could be huge if it goes through. No more flavors would be allowed. They propose to cap the nicotine to 20 milligram. No more flavors would be allowed. I'd, I don't know what that means, Dan Mansfield. Going to need some clarification on that. British eyes, I was on the fence about speaking in New Jersey hearing, but I heard your voice saying, you don't have to do everything, but you do have to do something. Fuck yeah, dude. Fuck yeah, dude. I, that's awesome, man. And you know, the silver lining to this, let me get right back to this. Okay, so here's the thing. I, I, I do have to cut this off. I'm going to get through the last super chats and then we're going to have to cut up this wild card Wednesday, but I want to leave you with some hope. I want to leave you with some, uh, I want to leave you with some inspiring words if I can think of anything off the top of my head. If I can think of anything off the top of my head right now. You don't have to do everything, but you do have to do something. One thing, one slight, I wouldn't even call it a silver lining. It's like an off-white lining to this cloud of hogwash. Hogwash. I was going to say horse shit, came out hogwash. The silver lining to all of this hogwash is that I have never seen so many like radicalized vapors and it is honestly inspiring. I get burnt out. Everybody gets burnt out. I've been burnt out, but what inspires me is when I feel burnt out, I can take a few hours and, and recharge my batteries and I know that there are thousands of vapors out there still going hard and fighting. Fighting, fighting, fighting. I've seen more vapors on Twitter tweeting at, uh, politicians. It's inspiring. You guys being so active, 13 million of us, Mr. Just Right One. You guys being so, so active inspires me to be more active. It's, it's just this really like symbiotic, like you guys help inspire me. I hope I can help inspire you. We will win. Vaping is not going anywhere. It can't. It's, it's far too big. This is a, this is a global, worldwide health issue and vaping is not going anywhere. It's going to get worse before it gets any better and we're going to be fighting and it's going to be ugly and it's going to be messy and it's going to be dirty, but it's the right thing to do. 480,000 smokers' lives depend on it. They need access, adult access to literally lifesaving vapor products. Literally lifesaving vapor products. Stan, uh, kids are lame without grandparents. Did I say mothers against vaping was horse shit? Yeah, you did. I mean, you didn't, but you did now. Dick roller, very gracious of you. Keep the vapey gravy flowing. Look, man, that's kind of all I know how to do at this point. Appreciate that. Uh, chasing clouds and flavor reviews, very gracious of you. I'm on it, Nick. I see 55-year-old vapors daily. Absolutely. Whip out your smartphone, have them shoot a quick video, throw that on Twitter. Tweet it at Cuomo. Tweet it at, uh, Whitmore. Tweeted, tweeted at, uh, I can't remember all of these governors' names. Like I feel like within the next like two weeks, I'm going to have to remember the governors' names of every damn state in the union and that makes me insane. Chasing clouds and flavor reviews, get on it. Definitely. That will only help us. Big Daddy Vapes, all three of my children and my wife are all very thankful that I vape instead of smoking cigarettes. Maybe they will be in a video saying that soon. Absolutely. Friends, family members, wives, boyfriends, girlfriends, whatever. Life partners, don't care. Get them on video. Get non-smokers on video talking about how they're so glad that their significant other quit, that their boyfriend quit, that their husband quit. Life vaping liberty and smoking. Liberty from smoking. Happiness, absolutely, Anthony. Very gracious of you. Oh my Lanta, flavors would be allowed in the Michigan bill that capped it to nicotine. Oh, okay. So the bill going through Michigan, flavors would be allowed and the nicotine cap would be 20 milligram, which I am so in favor of. I can't stress that enough. I'm so in favor of that. 20 milligram is amazing. When I started 18-milligram, what, we're not calling it freebies, traditional nicotine was all I needed. Is there a troll in the chat? Addie, you want to ban that person? Just send him packing? Just send him packing. We don't need their, we don't serve your kind here. Addie Tooney, very awesome tweets, by the way. I'm going to talk about that in the vlog, but Addie Tooney has been killing it with the advocacy on Twitter. Really appreciate you. Um, if everyone in the world blew a big cloud, it would slow down global warming. Now, I don't know enough about global warming to argue with you on that, but I'm going to go ahead and agree with you because yeah, it definitely would. Uh, Jim Bubba, banning flavors will only deter adults, not kids. Yeah, I know. I know that. You know that. Politicians don't understand that. Have, and has any politician asked, why did you vape? Did, has anybody, has any politician brought up the fact that maybe, just maybe, these teenagers weren't being, mm, completely truthful with what they're saying to people? Like if you're confronted by your parents, like you're confronted by your mom and you're vaping something, of course you're going to say it's just Nick. No, 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 ma, it's just nicotine. It's just nicotine. I'm saying, we're in the hospital, it was just nicotine. It wasn't weed. It wasn't weed. I promise it wasn't weed. I don't believe that, although, I don't believe that a lot of these people are being forthright and truthful into what they were actually vaping. And I think the few cases of people out there that said it was nicotine as well as, I think those are the ones that said it was just nicotine to begin with and then they caught the kid in a lie and figured out it was THC. I think that's what's going on there. Additionally, in 2019, hang on. No more super chats, please, you guys. No more super chats. I do actually have to wrap this up. I'd love to sit and super chat with you all damn day, but that's just not a reality. I have patrons that I need to get to. At four o'clock, I stream on my secret Instagram account with my patrons and I'm, that's happening in soon, in 10 minutes. Yo, yo, I'll see you guys over there, but I have to get there. I have to get there next. Have you seen the HuffPost article about Sharpless? Yeah, it is in the chat. Clouds and coils, thank you. It is in the chat and it is in the description of this video. Nicholas Garcia, maybe a giant four-story sub-owned chimney chucking cloud will change people's minds? Uh, maybe, but that might actually just be worse for our public image. We're trying to improve our public image right now. Peace out, mowgli vapes. Thank you for coming out, man. Ace, very gracious of you. Can't flavors be sold separately then added to unflavored liquids as a backup to this insanity? Maybe. I don't know. I don't feel like it's the time for loopholes yet. I would rather have vaping remain safe, legal and accessible for all adults. I don't want seventy-five year old Aunt Petunia to be confused walking into a vape shop and not understanding vaping and vaping is already confusing enough for people. And then you go on top of all of this confusing stuff like your watts and your ohms and your resistance and your batteries and make sure you put them in right and check the wraps on them. And here's your charger for your batteries and here's how you change out a coil head and boink, and here's how you fill your tank. Now additionally, on top of all of this new information, I know that cigarettes were really easy. You just had to take one out and light it. This is much more complicated. And on top of all of this new information that I've just given you so that you can vape. Now we're gonna talk about liquid. And so you have to take this bottle, right? And then take this bottle, you take the cap off of this bottle and you dump half this bottle into this bottle and then you shake it up and you let it sit for twenty-four hours and then you can vape it. That sixty-five year old Aunt Petunia is gonna go, oh, okay. Cigarettes because it's easy. I've always said, and I stand by this, I don't think they want to ban vaping. I'm gonna try to go back into one of my old videos from like two thousand nine and, uh, and quote myself on this. They're not going to ban vaping. They're only going to make it as difficult as possible to access. That's what they're going to try to do and that's what they're doing right now. That's what they're doing right now. So I don't think this is the time to be looking for loopholes. I don't think this is the time to be concerned with anything other than keeping vaping safe, legal and accessible. And I'll say it, I'll say it again. Vaping is not going anywhere. Vaping will survive. We will win. It's only a matter of time. It's gonna be, it's gonna be dirty. It's gonna be messy and it's gonna be ugly, but we can never give up. We have to be relentless. We have to be relentless. And just because we're not officially calling the White House right now, if you have free time, call the White House. If you have free time, call the governor of Massachusetts. You could take twenty minutes out of your day, make six phone calls every single day and have an immense impact. Could you imagine if we had thirteen million people calling governors every single day relentlessly? Relentlessly? Could you imagine if we had thirteen million vapors or the one point three million vapors in California calling the Los Angeles Public Health Committee? Thirteen million phone calls relentlessly every single day. We have the numbers. We have the science. Vaping ain't going anywhere. People that tell you you're still smoking, okay. That's what you say. You say, okay. That's all. Stupid questions. I, I have no time for stupid questions. You're smoking, you're still smoking. Okay. That's what I say. That's how you treat trolls. That's how you treat trolls. There is a lot of power. There's a lot of power in the okay. Lot of power in the okay. So that's where I'm gonna leave this wild card Wednesday, you guys. Uh, truly and honestly, thank you so much for coming out and hanging out with me. Like I said, moving forward, I am going to try to provide as much information as humanly possible. There's a lot of YouTubers out there that are all doing the same thing. Jay Hayes is doing his streams. Dash vapes is doing his videos. Ryan Hall did his videos. I do my live streams. Matt does his live streams. There are so many YouTubers that are doing these live streams because we all want all of us to be as educated as possible. We want us all to be on the same page. We want us all to have a clear focused message. And guys, remember, vaping is not going anywhere. Vaping is going to change the world and flavors are going to help it and it's up to us. This is my cause. I, 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 I give you my, my vow, my word right now. I am not going anywhere. I'm not, I don't have an exit strategy. I don't have a plan B. I'm not trying to back out and like, oh, I'm gonna start another different YouTube channel that's not vape related so that when this ban happens, I'll still have another YouTube channel that's not vape related. This is it. I'm grim fucking green. I've been here for ten years and I'm not going anywhere and I will have your back until the end. And the end is going to be when we're all vaping flavors safely, legally and accessibly to everybody in the United States. That's my end. Anyway, I'm gonna wrap this up, you guys. Like I said, thank you so much for coming out. I truly appreciate it. There will be a vlog tomorrow and, uh, it's gonna be weird tomorrow. Just as a heads up to everybody, tomorrow's vlog is going to be weird. That was not a burn to Ryan Hall. I love Ryan Hall. I, I, I'm encouraging Ryan Hall. His video was so good. I want him to do more. He has such a big audience. I want him to do more. Rip Trippers has such a big audience. I want him to do more. How, how our brains would explode if you got on YouTube and it was like Rip Trippers is live and the thumbnail was like Donald Trump. And he's like, I'm just talking about advocacy, you guys for two hours. Our brains would explode. So I'm encouraging every YouTuber to be as active as possible. Do what you feel is right. Do right by the vape community. That's all I've ever tried to do. Thank you guys so much for coming out. Uh, I'm gonna, this is, this is, this is getting to be way too much, so I'm gonna say this. I'll see you guys tomorrow. Let's keep fighting. I'll see you guys on vlog day. I hope you guys have an amazing rest of your Wednesday. To all of my yo yo, cool kids clubs, I'll see you guys in five minutes.